Today is September 19th. It's the little afternoon. This is Citizens Task Force municipal hearing process. May I just take my role? Or I can obviously observe everyone. We have Jim Barnett, we have Alistair Jeluski, we have Bob Churchill, we have Andy Holman, we have Joelle.
Paul.
Paul.
Oh, where's the bean tray? I'm sorry.
We have Penny Godsey, we have Carolyn Ramsey, and we have Cheryl Richardson.
And Jane Anderson.
So we are here. And are...
Amanda. And Amanda.
Amanda.
Amanda Boster. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Amanda has turned on the recorder, so we are being recorded for posterity. Our agenda item today is to review the draft which was emailed people late last night. And the drafting committee met yesterday and utilized both the information from the public hearing on September 30th, the discussion that this group has had previously, particularly on the 12th, we met to discuss how the hearing informs our thinking. And yesterday, the drafting committee took both of those information, the September 11th draft, and all the comments that have been received by task force members in Friday melded into the draft you have before you. It's our, my intention, my goal today is that we would be able to actually review the draft if there are issues that we need to discuss and make a decision about, that we do that today so that we are actually in a position to be able to share our draft recommendations with the public. The public hearing is scheduled for October 1st, and so my goal is that we actually get our version out either tomorrow or Monday at the latest, allowing people at least a week to review the draft before the public hearing. The first thing I want to say about the recommendations is the names of all the task force members should be included, and I didn't do that last night, and I think we should articulate who all the members of the task force are, and then it is a recommendation of the full committee. So that's my first proposal for change that you have before you. With that, I sent a copy of the task force recommendations to the municipal attorney, who is Dennis Wheeler, and I sent a copy to Julia Tucker, who is the Assembly's legal counsel. I also sent it to the three members of the Assembly who are the Rules Committee, including Mr. Trainey, Ms. Elvie Jackson, Elvie Ray Jackson, and Ms. Jennifer Johnson. The resolution that created this task force indicated that we would be reporting our findings to the Rules Committee, and that then, from there, we would be reporting to the Anchorage Assembly. The Rules Committee meeting had been scheduled for October 3rd, which is Thursday, and the noon meeting after the public hearing on Tuesday, the 1st. And we were, our original schedule is that we would be addressing the assembly on October 8th at the regular assembly meeting. That's the schedule we started out with. I don't know if that's the schedule we're going to end up with. We got a note, I got a note this morning from Jennifer Johnson saying that she would be out of town on the 3rd, and wanted to know if the Rules Committee would like to meet with us at another time. And so I wrote back to her and said, "Well, you wouldn't have the," she also will not be back until the 7th, so there's no time before the assembly meeting for us to include." So I looked at next week and said to Ms. Johnson and the other members of the Rules Committee, "Possibly we could meet on Wednesday or Thursday of next week at noon, but we would not have the benefit of the public hearing to inform our conversation."
That's true.
So that's all up in the air, and I give you that information. Additionally, we received an email from Jennifer Johnson posing questions for our consideration about the draft, and a copy of her email is here. Would anybody like a printed copy?
I have that.
And her questions are, number one is the electronic sign-up to be available 24 hours a day after the closing of the public hearing. And number two, is there any way to close the public hearing? It seems that a special interest group could use the public hearing process to filibuster ordinance by continuing or gaining the sign-up process. Which is the note that came from Jennifer Johnson. With that, I also want to draw your attention to Dennis Wheeler's comments about the draft, and his concern is that we sound like we've provided a legal opinion in the first recommendation regarding the ability of the Assembly to close off the hearing. And he had recommended on page three of his memo, alternative language for the first paragraph that talks about the task force recommendation regarding public hearings. So with that, I open the meeting and would like to walk through the draft and ask any members to collect any issues or concerns or comments on a paragraph-by-paragraph basis to go through that at this point.
Can I ask one thing first?
Absolutely.
Is Jennifer Johnson able to call in to the Rules Committee meeting?
I do not know.
So I can go out?
Okay. I have a question. How and when do we want to, if we want to respond to Mr. Wheeler, or consider, this looks complicated.
Actually, not so complicated. I mean, my observation is there's a lot of words, but the gist of it is that...
He wants to substitute...
He wants us to soften the language so that it's a recommendation and an opinion as opposed to something like a legal opinion and fact. And that his recommendation on page three of three would, is his recommendation regarding the paragraph on the bottom of our page one, is what I believe he is recommending. So it's for our consideration. Jim? Okay.
I think the way we should handle that particular change, yes indeed, we're not a legally constituted body, we are recommending, but I think that we should add a sentence after quoting the Bill of Rights that says, and I quote, "We consider this provision obligates the Assembly to conduct its business only after ensuring maximum public participation, regardless of the complexity, emotion, or level of public participation."
Can you tell me where you're reading from?
I? I'm reading something I just wrote.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Would you repeat? Would you repeat it, please?
All I'm saying is, if we're not allowed to find something, because apparently that suggests we're a legally constituted duly-elected body, then I think we need to give our opinion as to what the Charter means.
Okay. Could you repeat what you suggested, please?
"We consider this provision obligates the Assembly to conduct its business only after ensuring maximum public participation, regardless of the complexity, emotion, or level of public participation."
I like that.
And all I'm trying to say is, Assembly, our interpretation of the Charter is, you don't have a choice in that, regardless of how tough it is, if people are being profane, et cetera. Pick your problem with the public. You gotta let the public have their say.
Sure. Mr. Potter, Mr. Wheeler, who is the municipal attorney, commented on our draft and suggested that we sound like we were giving a legal interpretation of the Charter, and Jim is offering language that provides it so that it's our opinion that this is what this means. As opposed to, I said the task force fines, and he took umbrage with that note. Anyway.
Command Chair.
Yes.
In any of your discussions with the Assembly, was there any intent that we would convert our ideas into ordinance language instead of general recommendations, which we have done?
First of all, we had no conversations with the Assembly as a whole. Secondly, the conversations I had with the Rules Committee was make recommendations. There was no conversation about language as an ordinance or not.
That's fine. I'm just, in other words, from your understanding, we're carrying out the discussion and intent of those members you talked about.
Absolutely. And I think, I think we could probably even go back to the, to the resolution that created the body.
Do you want a copy of this?
And it's in front of me if I can find it.
Well, I have it.
The gist of which is, now therefore be resolved that they create... "Participation of the task force is invited to advise and assist the Assembly in its development of procedures governing the Assembly's conduct of public hearings, opening testimony for members of the public. Task force is to come to consensus on recommendations to advise and assist the Assembly in the development of procedures governing the Assembly's conduct of public hearings. Citizens Task Force recommendations will be presented to the Rules Committee prior to the presentation to the Assembly." That's it?
Fine. That's...
Thank you.
Everything's up to date.
Okay. So procedurally, let's start with the first paragraph. Any changes to the first paragraph on page one?
You're just going to add our names, correct?
I'm going to say that Citizens Task Force is composed of these people. And I'm going to put that in the first paragraph.
Okay.
Or alternatively, I can say, respectfully submitted by all of us, whichever you want.
I like the latter.
What I want to do is just go through paragraph by paragraph to say, is this language you like? If this is not language, you have some proposals for different language. I would like to actually have gone through this document today so that we are in a position to be able to say, this is our draft recommendation, and we would like the public to comment on this recommendation. And my goal for the conversation is that we have consensus. Where we don't have consensus, we would actually take a vote. Okay? Any changes to number one?
Are we on page one or number one?
Page one, paragraph one of page one.
Okay. Paragraph one.
It says, "The Citizens Task Force on the Public Hearing Process."
Yes, I just want to make sure that if you could articulate which paragraph as we move around, that would be helpful. Because I don't want to jump ahead. Otherwise, I'll jump ahead.
Wow.
You know how I am.
Members, the second paragraph said, "Members affirm the following principles."
I have one comment, and I haven't got my language together, but I would appreciate a fourth bullet that talks about when you know an action is controversial, working on it in advance of submitting an ordinance is likely to result in a better product, better more solid recommendations, and less community outrage. That's the wrong word. Less community, and more community peace, or cooperation.
Acceptance or...
Acceptance.
But I would love if you would work on some language about that, so in a very concise form, you can articulate that throughout the time we're down here today talking. Paragraph number three starts, "Based on the public hearing, we make the following recommendations." Any changes to that sentence? Okay. Number one, Charter guarantees for a public hearing.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So in this document, it appears that he takes issue with the word...
The document that does what?
Yeah, yeah. He takes issue with the word guarantee. Does it actually say that in the Charter, the word guarantee?
Yes.
Okay. So...
The Charter says, I'll read it to you. The Charter, this is the Bill of Rights, "This Charter guarantees rights of the people of Anchorage that are, in addition to the rights guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alaska. Among the rights guaranteed in this Charter are ordinance number 10, the right to be heard at public hearings prior to the adoption of proposed six-year plans of the school system and the municipality, or approval of the annual budget, or any ordinance except an emergency ordinance as defined in the right."
So my comment is, is that the, actually, the part that I think is the strongest statement in this whole chapter here is actually this first part, which is a direct quotation of the Charter. So our version of the language that follows in the subsequent paragraph and his language that follows in the subsequent paragraph are actually not dramatically different. We state it's a right. He just wants us to wordsmith us, to take out the word fines, to do a couple of other words, but the strongest language that we use is actually straight out of the Charter. And the, I, it's kind of hard for me to actually understand why it's getting so exercised about in the second paragraph, but if it's simply the word fine, I actually think that even if we took out our words and put his words in there and left that top sentence, that whole top sentence there, it's just as strong as our other statement. Which is very clear that we find you don't have the right to cut off public testimony.
Where are you and his, I haven't read his document.
It's the very last page.
The first paragraph, the third, the paragraph in bold, excuse recommendations. The difference is, instead of this task force fines, it says the task force recommends. And where we say, "Assembly cannot..."
Cannot.
Yeah. The public hearing cannot be ended by a vote of the Assembly. He says, we should say, "If the Assembly runs out of time, your old people have come, the task force recommends the hearing be continued." That's what he's just...
He's the recommend versus the...
Right. I think it's really important to acknowledge in what he wrote though, is that the task force recommends the public hearings cannot be ended by a vote of the Assembly while people are in front of them, and I think that is fairly substantial language. What he's saying is, we're saying, you can't do what you just did, right? And so I think whether we...
Take advantage of that.
Yeah, all of the other language we have in here is kind of getting to the same point, which is that you can't do this by a vote while people are waiting to testify.
Therefore, your conclusion is?
Therefore, our conclusion is, I actually don't have any heartburn with what he has here, as long as his first words are there, as long as the direct quote from the Charter begins with right to be heard.
I just don't want to add Jim's.
I like Jim's statement.
I really want, I want to see that in there.
That's fine. Okay. I want to mention that in the quoting of the Charter where it says, dot, 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 what I left out is, "Prior to the adoption of proposed six-year plans of the school system and the municipality, or approval of the annual budget," which is in here and I could put in there. It just sort of distracted people from, or any ordinance.
It's a red herring.
But anyway, well, it's not a red herring. It's just, it's more, so the question is, should I put it in there or not?
I personally think you should put it in there, so nobody says, boy, you're just, it's out of context.
It's safer.
I agree.
Okay. Quote verbatim. All right. So the notion that we would substitute the language proposed by Dennis Wheeler on page three of three for the, for the sentence reads the task force fines, how do people feel about that?
Can you give us a second, and I'll check on it.
Is it, is still substantively accurate? I mean, I didn't read his word for word with what you had written, but is that substantively accurate? He hasn't changed the...
Yes.
No.
We're saying you can't do it. He's saying, we recommend that you continue the hearing if you run out of time.
Okay.
Yes.
The issue I have with it is, if this language comes down to interpretation, you go to Wheeler's language, Wheeler's going to be the one to interpret it, and essentially say, well, what they agreed to and what I meant was, this is optional. And I'm just a little bit nervous. I think our language is strong. I think it's consistent with the Charter. I'm not really in favor of changing it, other than I really like what Jim had to say, and I like the language he used.
Jim, would you reiterate it one more time?
And the point I'm trying to make is, here's the Charter. We think the Charter is an even stronger obligation on you all since you're signed up, and when you take your oath of office, you're confirming you're going to enforce the Charter. The quotes that he has, not only are they old, but they also refer to the U.S. Constitution. And, you know, our point is, oh, by the way, you got this Charter, and you don't get to avoid the Charter with references to Judge Holmes from 1915. So anyway.
Can you read it one more time so I can write it down?
And it's right after that. "We consider this provision means the Assembly has a duty to conduct its business only after ensuring maximum public participation, regardless of the complexity, emotion, or level of public participation." And obviously, you guys can wordsmith that too. I'm just, the point is, I'm trying to get us to make an affirmative statement about what the Charter imposes a duty on the Assembly.
Hey, I have a question, and it's because I'm not a lawyer. What can you do with the word recommends?
We are not, we're not the Assembly, so recommends is just fine. Fines suggests we're a judge.
Right.
Cheryl?
I...
And that's obviously, he's, he's trying to tone us down a touch, and I don't see a difference.
Well, I, literal, I had concern about the voice shifting inside the document that you prepared, and I think we've been called on it.
Voice shifting? Tell me, I don't understand.
Well, there's some musts and there are some recommends.
Let me give me a piece of paper.
I felt that in some cases, you were writing language that could go straight into an ordinance, and in other cases, it was couched in language that recommends an action. So I wonder if you could please go through the thing and make a consistent voice. I mean, if you want me, I can circle the verbs.
But some things, I think...
I noticed that the first time I read it, that there was inconsistent verbiage or verbs. There were inconsistent verbs that...
But one of the things we talked about yesterday when we did this, was we said that there were going to be some things that were going to be more shternly and more forefront.
Yes.
Then there were going to be some more recommendations. So I don't think the cadence is off, because there are things that we're stating in a firm manner, and then there's things that we're stating, well, we're going to recommend this on the side.
Amanda? So between these two points, it might be beneficial if we clarify throughout the document so you understand when the voice switches that this is a recommendation versus...
Yes, I'm thinking maybe some clarifying, this is our recommendation, or, but maybe only once, you need to stand, state that only once, rather than give it to this one paragraph that he wants us to put in. Maybe we could just state it upfront.
It is stated upfront. "Based on the public hearing, blah, 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 task force offers the following recommendations as consideration to Anchorage Assembly." It's the third, it's the second paragraph in the opening statement of the whole document. Maybe you could bold it or underline it, if that makes people feel better, that we don't think we're in charge.
Got it. Got it. That's it. Pretty fast.
Andy?
They do seem interested in the AL 37 response. A lot of their stuff was about law in Kansas and other places, and it kind of baffles me because this is about our Charter, Anchorage residents. I realize they may not do it this way in Kansas, or as you pointed out, for the Supreme Court. But, but yeah, this is, this is the law we have for Anchorage. And how they continue to say, well, Phoenix wouldn't do it this way, and feel like that town type. But I know that's not our job to say anything about that, so I'm not suggesting we comment.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, but I do have a comment on it. He keeps quoting Constitution, but our Charter says we have, in addition to rights guaranteed by the Constitution, so we can go over and above what the Constitution gives to it.
Absolutely.
So what he's saying is sort of irrelevant in that our Charter gives us more rights than that.
That's, that's the critical issue. He's trying to say, the U.S. Constitution means you can waffle, but the point is, our Charter makes it clear to Assembly members, when they take the oath of office, they're obligated to do the Charter, even if it's more than the Constitution.
You can't do less than, you can do more than.
So Wheeler's wrong.
I articulate that a homeworld Charter means that the people who live here get to write the structure for the government. They don't, in that, and so we, we cannot violate the Constitution of the United States, but we can go, we can exceed the Constitution of the United States.
Right. And I think that's a principle of law that Wheeler forgot.
So for the purposes of getting this validated today, which is your expressed desire, Jane, which I think is great, should we kind of wrap up our, because I think there's ones, if we're going to indulge him at all, then we need to figure out how to do that. Otherwise, I think we should just move the page with the amendment that Jim added. We can get that language added later, and we move this one page at a time, because otherwise, we will be here all day jumping back and forth.
I agree.
So I would just ask, what the body wishes in order to get this product approved today, I would just urge that we do it one page at a time, because that's what Jane wishes, to approve this entire product today.
Right.
Oh, I don't think it's...
Okay. Okay, so this bottom paragraph called the task force fines, I just need to have an understanding of the wish of the body with respect to which words we want to use.
I could just recommend instead of fine.
And we leave the existing language, Jim? Just change one word?
Yeah. And add his sentences to the bottom.
Which is?
He's going to get it.
Okay. And the, the, Barnett says, goes under the Charter quote, which will be quoted verbatim, not with the dot, dot, dots, and it says, again, just for your information, "We consider this provision," meaning the Charter, "We consider this provision means the Assembly has a duty to conduct its business only after maximizing public participation, regardless of the complexity, emotion, or level of public participation." Okay.
All right. I moved that page as amended.
I see.
And then theoretically, I'll come in with a fourth bullet that you can think about at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
But we've got a public hearing to review all this, so we've, we've got another crack at everything we've written.
Yeah. This will be simple and...
All I'm doing is trying to get the version that's going to go to the public ready today. So let's go on to page two.
Do you want to move each page?
No.
No?
I want to make any changes that we go along the way. Okay. Okay. Item number two, page two, public notice proposed Assembly action. Any changes to paragraph eight?
To B.
Any changes to paragraph B?
Paragraph B. A click, somehow a click here button to submit public testimony on so, which says municipal website should be revised and more user-friendly for the public. Title of ordinances, I'd also like to see it easier as to how to submit public testimony.
Okay, I do understand what you want me to do. When you say a click here button, tell me...
When you go into the municipal website in order to submit public testimony, unless you know you have to go to the clerk's webs, the clerk's email to submit, and you submit it directly to your Assembly member, it is not public testimony. Your written testimony is not considered to be public document unless it goes through the clerk's email. So I would like to see something on the website that says, this is where you need to go to submit your public testimony.
Okay. Let me just say that we're in the notice of public hearings in this paragraph, and in paragraph three...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We get, we get to the part where, where people can submit stuff electronically...
Okay, then I'll find it in there.
Later, but, but it doesn't specifically say we want a button that says, click here for public testimony, but this is, this section is just on the public notice.
I apologize. I read this at four o'clock this morning.
Me too.
And Jane, the three votes, he's right. It's not for introduction, it's for setting for public hearing. It's not for introduction, it's for setting for public hearing.
Okay, so, so in paragraph C-
So you need that, three votes needs to come after public hearing on the next line.
Processed Assembly should include items such as how the consent agenda works, introduction of ordinance requires three votes.
The three votes, according to him, is set for public hearing.
Anybody can-
Anybody can introduce. So it should read, introduction of ordinance is comma, and then, setting an ordinance for public hearing requiring three votes.
Thank you very much.
See what I mean?
Yes.
I think, I think he's accurate about that.
Three votes to give in public hearing.
Got it. Okay.
Where are we?
We're on page two, item two, C, the second sentence, which should include items such as how the consent agenda works, introduction of ordinances, comma, setting ordinances for public hearing requires three votes.
Okay.
I'm going to delete and after the introduction, I'm going to do a-
And I do have a comment on that.
Wait, I'm, these are just examples of shit that should be there, and, and if it's not right, there, it doesn't matter. It's, it, it's, it should include items such as the directions for how people get in. So-
Right.
How the consent agenda works, how ordinances are introduced, and how any citizen can submit a written application for an appearance request on a specific topic. I'm going to delete the whole thing about setting for the agenda and three votes, because this is, this is an example of the kind of instructions that could be on the top of the agenda.
And the fact that we don't get it right means maybe the public does. So that's, that kind of proves our point.
Okay, introduction of ordinances, setting ordinances for public hearing, any citizen can submit a written application, or, maybe I should say how an appearance request works.
Such as?
How an appearance request works. Public hearings begin at six, and audience participation provides an opportunity for a citizen to speak for three minutes on any topic that is, is the words correct, Amanda?
Is that correct?
Not under consideration by the Assembly?
I'm sorry, the last?
I'm on, I'm on page two, item C, the last sentence of item C. I'm just trying to make sure that the word is correct. Audience participation provides an opportunity for a citizen to speak for three minutes on any topic that is not under consideration by the Assembly. Is that correct?
Yes and no. And I'm sorry, this is very, this is what happened at the last Assembly, at the fluoride, and it is-
I thought that was a-
And so, I would say that-
Mess.
Yeah.
Okay.
What would you say, Amanda?
What I'm trying to say is we don't necessarily have to get it right as much as, these are examples of the kinds of things that should be-
He overstepped again with that.
Okay, so, or how audience participation works, perhaps.
Okay, audience participation has typically functioned as an opportunity to speak on any item not on the agenda. And that was what was brought up at the last meeting, and then the body overruled the vote, or the, the chair on that.
Okay.
And they what?
My head's been explored. So how about, on a specific topic, all of this sentence is, is examples of stuff that should be at the top of the agenda that explains things. We maybe don't have to explain it in this sentence.
And the guideline is for- So I would say, just say, audience participation. I wouldn't delve into that one because I, I think that that's, it, it might not be-
True to my-
Something that we want to do.
Yeah, but I, I think it needs some clarification. That doesn't bother me.
All right, but the trouble is-
I need to clarify about us.
The Assembly doesn't have agreement on what it, and how audience participation is, so we're not going to fix it here. All I'm saying is that the rules for audience participation should be in the agenda. That's, this sentence says, the citizens should be able to pick up the agenda and go, oh, there's a such a thing as an appearance request, there's such a thing as audience participation, there's such a thing as public hearing, and that starts at six, and I get it, I, in terms of what the rules are. This is just an example of what are the rules.
I agree, yeah. You just need to say how it works, not, you don't have to list how it works, right? Like you said there.
And I have a, I just have a word smithing in the second line of two C. I'm thinking it should be on the agenda rather than at the top.
No, I disagree.
Or in the agenda, but not at the top.
Why?
Because it's going to be a whole page. It's going to be a page.
So it should be on the top because it should be the first thing that anybody sees, and it should be in the same place every single time.
Okay, if you guys mean that, then I can look at that.
You shouldn't have to look at the back of the back page.
Okay. I give up on that one.
I read, moving on to D.
Wait, I'm just going to read it out loud again, saying it should include items such as how the consent agenda works, introduction of ordinance, setting ordinances for public hearings, how an appearance request for audience participation works, and public hearings begin at 6:00 P.M.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, moving on to item D. Any changes to item D?
Just clarification, maybe municipal kiosk should be provided the public with free access. They already are computers in the libraries, so maybe it should just clarify that we think there should be one in the lobby of the Assembly chambers.
In a locked box.
Okay.
Maybe the word kiosk should be, not changed. Municipality should provide the public with free access, should it all be this?
The municipality should provide the public with free access to the municipal website in the Assembly lobby.
Yeah.
Well, is that the only place you want it? I think you want it.
Well, it's already in the library upstairs, because there's already, there's already a computer in those locations.
I'm just hoping they won't say, okay, we don't need it there, that we're recommending they just need it. I think we want to continue on with where it is.
When we, yeah, we originally talked about, we talked about one being available here in City Hall. We talked about one being available in the Assembly chambers. We talked about it being in multiple locations across-
See, that's something I read D also. I read D as an encouragement to put it in all public buildings.
In other places, yeah.
Yeah, on a broad scale. It doesn't demand it, it just says that the more public buildings to have this, the better, and, and to be generally available. That's how I read D.
And I'd like to have it in that broader.
Do we, do we want to specify that there's one in the Assembly lobby? Because that's what I think we were, one of the original points was that you should be able to walk out to the Assembly lobby and figure this out, which you cannot do right now.
I'm just saying a little clarification, because it is already in the libraries. We probably want to state it should be in the lobby. I'm not saying that we can't also suggest it for other places.
Yeah.
Well, then, in other words, add.
How about this, municipal kiosks should provide public access with free access to the municipal website and the Assembly lobby, and other public buildings to provide access to people who do not have control or access to them.
Assembly chambers lobby.
Assembly chambers lobby.
Just to comment on that, the library closes at nine o'clock, so-
Okay.
You can do Assembly maybe go until midnight, so.
Yeah, but if it's clarified that we're doing simply-
So we're deleting libraries because it's already there. So it's going to read access to the municipal website in the Assembly chamber lobby for other, and other public buildings to provide access to people. Okay.
Yes.
Any other changes to D?
Good.
Item E. I, I want to mention-
I was just going to say that Cheryl's talking about the must change, right?
Well, no, I'm covered now, I think. We got the word recommendations upfront.
Well, here's, here, the must is really intentional because people don't even know what is on the addendum or what was laid on the table, and they're, and although Amanda, God bless her, has already figured out that it's a good thing, she's instituting recommendation of this task force to make sure that the addendum is in the back of the house and that wasn't there before, and the materials are there. But it was, um, addendum issues, laid-on-the-table issues, and then, yesterday, I, after we met, I also met with Julia Tucker, who said there's also an issue associated with title only, which means there's a placeholder called the title of the thing, it gets introduced, and they don't even have to produce the, the content of the ordinance until a week later. And then, they shouldn't do that. That, if they're going to put an addendum, a laid-on-the-table, it has to be an actual document, which is proposed.
And it must have public notice.
Well, the, the, the addendum is an ordinance that's being introduced, and that then can be set for public notice, which requires 10 days, and this is the beginning of that clock. I know you articulated that the surprise about the 37 was that it was on the addendum, and you hadn't seen it on the Friday public agenda. Excuse me, you hadn't seen it on the public notice for the meeting, which went on the Friday before, and you saw it only on, help me, I'm getting my Fridays mixed up.
The addendum Friday is three days, the Friday directly before the meeting. The agenda deadline is the Friday, two Fridays before. And so, I think that what Jane is trying to clarify, when items are set for introduction on the addendum, they still get the public notice of two weeks.
For the public hearing.
But they're just not on the agenda with all the other items when it first comes out. So it's-
They can't, they can't take an issue from an addendum and take action on it that night. They have to have a two-week public notice hearing process. Okay, so, I'm just saying, in this case, what is in the addendum and what is laid on the table must be revealed to the public. And that's a must, not a, if you feel like it.
No.
Okay? Any other changes to that? Moving on to item F. Any changes to that?
The municipal clerk's office now has a Facebook page and a Twitter account.
You know what's really funny? My computer, I had one word, and it said, it was misspelled, so-
It is actually one word.
Okay. All right, thank you. Terrific.
You actually now have a Facebook page?
The municipal clerk's office.
I'm impressed.
Two lights so far.
Two lights. We're going to, we're going to change that by the end of this meeting. Like it right now.
Item G. Better signage?
Oh, yes, please. We're also working on that, so, but-
It was Carolyn who said, I can't quite tell what all that stuff is. I need a better sign that tells me this is the agenda. This is the agenda.
Well, here's piles of paper.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe flashy neon lights.
Good. The planning commission and the planning board and zoning board typically do is that the agenda is in a different colored paper.
Oh.
So I'm not saying that that makes it any easier, but it's easier because when people are looking at the whole wall of all those receptacles-
They see a difference.
Yeah.
That's a really good idea.
They see a difference.
I think to be in screaming yellow.
What could you see? With the agendas in a different color?
The planning commission, the agenda's in a different color. That's a, that's a good idea. Especially if it's in something that people can still read the words on, not, like, yo. Okay, item number three, public hearings. Paragraph eight. Again, this is, this is an example of what the rules are that should be printed on the agenda.
Jane?
I, yes, Jim?
Am I detecting in three A, you took out the word address, that a person doesn't have to give their address, which I think we agreed to yesterday at the little drafting session. But weren't we going to have them say their neighborhood or community?
Optional.
Okay, and what we get to do is decide right now what we want to do. There was some people who said it should be optional, meaning that the chair could say, please tell us your neighborhood at the same time, or we could just put it in here and recommend, and the issue was, people didn't want to have to give their address for security reasons, for safety reasons, but, so then, or, what we were talking about is, in the case of the civil rights ordinance, people from outside the community were testifying and, could be residents or taxpayers or what. So what we concluded yesterday was if you said what your neighborhood was or the community that you live in, and should we put that in here?
It is in B.
I know.
Okay.
But, I mean, I-
It is in, where is it?
It's in, it's in three B.
Last sentence of three B.
See, again, this, this is the, items that should be included, but not limited to our examples. Then in B, it says, speakers may be asked to identify their neighborhood, community of residence.
Yeah, those, I think those are contradictory, because you say should, and then you have may. A says should, B says may.
But they're both discretionary. I mean, I don't see that as particularly conflicting.
Speaker requirements to identify themselves.
Because really, what we're talking about is just some kind of a geographical identifier, whether it be zip code, or community council, or something that would allow them to feel secure that somebody wasn't going to show up at their household, but still would give the Assembly an idea of, of where they live.
Okay, but let me, let me articulate that the may, the Assembly, I'm telling, I'm, in B, in the first sentence, I'm saying the Assembly does have the authority to limit testimony time. And I'm, I'm saying, maybe I should say, does have the authority to limit the amount of time a person is allocated. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm absolutely saying, they can do that. They can, they can organize it in a manner that makes sense. So, the, the, the may is probably not correct.
So just put in can? Just put in the word can, Jane? I mean, that's-
Well, I like, I like the, has the authority, it's, it's very heavy duty.
What I want to say is, they can do it, we recommend, maybe what we want to say, we recommend that there be a three, maybe we should do that. We recommend, the task force recommends that there is a three-minute time limit for individuals and a five-minute time limit for designated community councils, which is an issue that we discussed yesterday and which we do not have agreement on. So how about if we say the Assembly may limit the amount of time, or has the authority?
What about the task force recommends?
Right.
Yeah.
But the Assembly has the authority to limit the amount of time the task force recommends. Now, task force, we have a difference of opinion on this.
Actually, me not.
Oh, Bob, all right.
I spent four hours chewing this over with a bunch of ne'er-do-wells that are very active in politics.
Ne'er-do-wells!
And what we're talking about in Ms. Bitstein, spurious allegations about the groups are-
Oh, that's right.
I'm not saying they're inaccurate, I'm just saying they're spurious.
I called them arrogant.
What I was talking about was the idea of allotting organizations, because I have been informed where, where we've done that, it's been very, very productive. But I've talked to a lot of people that said, it's neither the time nor the forum to do that. And, and they said, in all likelihood, it would create the appearance of, maybe not the fact, but the appearance of. And, and I just think it's something that, that I, I personally would step away from at this point, because I think you've got a fabulous document, and I think it would add value.
Yesterday, he, yesterday, he wanted more than five minutes. So now we've got three minutes for an individual and five minutes for a designated community council representative. Amanda?
I move for consideration of the body, three minutes for everyone and not the additional five minutes for community councils.
Why?
What?
Some of the things that Bob just discussed of these appearance of, they get additional time because they're with an organization, and how are we giving this particular organization a different, additional time, but not other organizations' additional time? And currently, at the Assembly meetings, I see it function where, when a community council president does come up, and they are presenting, and they are in the middle of their presentation, and they do need additional time, it is at the discretion of the chair or other members to allow them to continue speaking.
Madam Sharon?
Okay, we're going to go, Bob, Tim.
Okay. I would argue to keep it in. I'll tell you why, because the charter specifically acknowledges that the value of the community councils is a subgroup to the Assembly. And I, and I think, I think that's explainable in that light. The other thing is, I love the message of saying, there's a real value added to community councils. I like the message it sends, quite frankly. I like the message it sends, quite frankly. So, you know, those are two reasons I would really support keeping this in.
I also wanted to just underscore that on page five, there's a paragraph number eight on the community council collaboration, which underscores the point Bob just made, which is the charter recognizes the community councils as a vehicle for neighborhood services. Now we go to Tim and then Carol.
I'd have to echo everything in the Senate, exactly to the point John had to make, that the other groups, whether it's ABT or something else, aren't in the charter. Sorry. And the charter specifically tries to revalue the community and, you know, I think it's okay to have that.
Okay, Carolyn, Cheryl, and Penny.
I'm going to second Tim and Bob, I'm done, thank you.
Cheryl and Penny.
I found during Title 21 that Rabbit Creek Council had done a lot of work, pages and pages of work. And they were a thorn in the assembly side, and they were not asked to go beyond the three minutes. And that information was pretty much lost in the speed of the... And it would have been real beneficial had they had their five minutes. I mean, from my viewpoint personally.
Penny?
This isn't actually on the midst, you know, if we want to... I think you might want to take out the, "Speakers may be asked to identify their neighborhood or community," and just leave it in A and take it out of B. It's kind of changing the subject. We're talking about time limits and changing it to... Oh, by the way, we already mentioned it in A, so I think we should strike it from B and leave it in A. It would be, to me, it'd be cleaner. Never saying three minutes or five minutes or whatever it was saying.
Okay, okay, okay. Got, now, I got to this, that question. Let's go back to the question of Amanda's consideration.
Yeah.
How many people would like to expand, would like to limit everybody to three minutes, period? Okay, Amanda, God bless you. I'm sorry, but you look at... I'm sorry. All right. The question that Penny poses about speakers may be asked to identify the neighborhood or the community of residence, should we put that in paragraph A?
I like it where it is. Do you?
I think A makes more sense, honestly, with what Penny's saying, because paragraph B, well, in some ways it might not.
It's more a "should" and a "may," I think.
In A, it's an A, I think it should be an A.
But as a "should," you guys want people to... You want them to identify their community every time?
I think "may be asked."
Okay, let's draw this, and "may be asked." Let's put in A, it says, "Speaker requirements to identify themselves by name and possibly neighborhood."
Why does it have a description of the process?
That could bring that up earlier, and then add "with" to "may."
Madam Chair?
Yes?
On this one, I'll... What, maybe I turn to Amanda to ask a question. When owners of, for example, of substantial property here may be out of town, do those people come often and testify? And does anything here, identification of neighborhood, are we putting out some testimony that should be allowed? I think a person that is a substantial property owner is different than a busload of people coming in from the valley. I'm just wondering how that fits into our discussion.
I thought that when we had this conversation at our last meeting, the understanding was that at some point, they may also be asked to identify where they're from. I thought that we weren't putting it forward that everybody always has to identify where they're from because I don't want to limit testimony from people outside of Anchorage, and I don't want it to appear that we're making recommendations that perhaps would, I think that we are in a global community. I think Anchorage is the largest city. We are going to have people from out of our geographical area come in that may have feedback.
Now, nothing we have said so far creates that limit. Is that not correct?
Correct. All we're doing is saying that the assembly may request people to identify their neighborhood or their community of residence. It's not required that they do it. What is required is that the person identify their name. So now we have Tim and then Cheryl.
Yeah, I... We were trying to create a tool that could be used in a situation where it might be helpful so that if it's obvious that there's five plus loads of people from Willow, that they wouldn't be recognizable. Show up.
I'm a Willow property. When I'm in Willow, I look like a Willowite.
How do you pass as a Willowite?
With your, with your...
So...
With your.
I just think it's a tool that the assembly has to use so that if it's obvious that there's a group of people that are trying to influence something and has a special interest, that it can become pretty clear that the chair can ask them to identify, you know, where they live, what community they're in, what piece of property they may own within the city.
Should... I'm going to turn.
Okay, we have Tim, then we have Cheryl, then we have Carolyn.
I'm going to go.
Carolyn.
I just wanted to ask Tim a question. Should there be a, you need to have some sort of stake? Instead, like, can you come and testify if you live in Colorado and you're just here visiting?
Absolutely. We might learn something.
Just checking.
Okay, so what it's going to... How paragraph 3A is going to read is, "included but are not limited to time limits, opportunities for submittal of electronic testimony, time limit for speakers, speaker requirements to identify themselves by name and possibly neighborhood and community, and a description of the process for continuation of public hearings." Again, the purpose of A is, I want somebody other than us to think about what the rules are that should be described so that people come to the community, come to that meeting, and have a clue what's going to happen. Then we're going to find paragraph B. Reads, "The assembly has the authority to limit the amount of time a person is allotted to testify. This task force recommends there's a three-minute time limit for individual speakers and a five-minute time limit for designated representatives of community councils, period."
Period.
And then that speaker is gone. Onto paragraph C. Any proposed changes?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure.
If a person is not... Last sentence in the paragraph. "If a person is not available when called, they do not forfeit their chance to be heard and can still testify at the end of the hearing." I would strike "can still testify" and say, well, excuse me, and can sign up again on the sign-up sheet.
I think what we were trying to do with this was that it couldn't be created that there be a situation that because you weren't signed up on the list, but you were there, there was still time left, so that when the assembly gets to the last name on the list, they need to ask, "Is there anyone else?"
Oh, that's a different issue. That's a... I believe that's a separate issue than what I'm trying to address because, in my opinion, this last sentence tells that person they have to go to the very back of the line. And I'm saying they can jump back in.
Wait, wait.
And then the fact, what you've raised, I think is a second issue, and I agree that that's what we were trying to accomplish.
And this is interesting because that's... This is Carolyn's concept, and your interpretation's different than hers. So this is interesting. What was your notion about if they weren't there when their name was called, then what happens?
Then they are free to... They can go sign right, sign back up if they're using a sign-up sheet. They can put their name back on the list. As far as I'm concerned, they can just stand in the queue and queue in. I don't have an issue with that. They're already signed up if they're not there. If their name has already been called and they missed it, they can just stand in the queue and queue in because honestly, the amount of people that are going to do that is miniscule in reality.
I think what you're trying to say is, if you're not there, that doesn't mean you can't testify.
Exactly.
You just get, sign up again and get back in queue. But you can't be denied the right to testify because when you were called, you weren't present.
That's exactly what I was trying to say. If a person is not available when called, they do not forfeit their chance to be heard, period. Yeah, I think that's...
Okay, good idea, good idea. Great.
I like what Tim brought up about, it might be nice if we mentioned that whenever a public hearing is about to be closed, it is current practice that the chair says, "Is there anyone else to testify, anyone at all?" And then closes the public hearing. So maybe we might want to also include that in our recommendations, even though it is a practice already, but just that we support that.
What words would you add?
The chair currently says, "Is there anyone else to testify, anyone at all?"
Prior to closing public hearing, the chair will. And I like that. I think it's clear, it's easy to...
It's current practice.
Okay.
And another item?
The chair will ask, "Is there anybody else?"
Through the chair.
To me.
On item C, where it says that it must be managed by the municipality to ensure fairness.
Yes?
Who gives the municipality that context?
I'm sorry, I have no idea. And the reason, I mean, it just can't be, in this case...
Clerk's office.
What happens is, the unions were told that the assembly would not manage the list. So they did it. And we also had testimony from the young woman who said that somebody who was managing the list under civil rights told her she couldn't testify because she was too young.
Right.
I don't know the answer to that question. Do you want the clerk's office?
I think in the context of the municipality, you know, we could say it's the mayor, it's the city manager, but I'd much rather have it be the clerk's office. And if we're going to say who that's going to be so that everybody doesn't go like this at the public meeting,
Got it.
That it be the clerk's office.
Okay, all is in favor of the clerk's office.
Here, here.
And the other reason we...
Has to be managed by the municipal clerk's office.
We just, somewhere in here, the citizens have a right to ask for a...
It's the next thing.
It's the next thing, okay, I apologize.
And you've got two periods.
Oh, there is, got it.
It's a really big item, Jane. You have two periods after the word "the meeting."
Where?
In the very middle of the...
What, you mean the letter?
People should be able to sign... C. We're still on C. It's bad.
You must be able to sign electronically for a person to make you want one of those paragraphs or periods to go in.
And also the meeting.
Okay.
Or add three and say there was something there we wanted to include. We could go either way.
And the meeting is sandwiched together.
Got it. I want you to know that this is not my forte.
You've been doing beautifully.
You're doing so well.
But we have nitpickers here.
Good, I'm glad. Okay. Anything else about paragraph C? The last sentence is, "Prior to the close of the public hearing, the chair will ask, would anyone else like to testify?"
Well, I would like to see that as standalone, I think. This has to do with the sign-up sheet.
Okay.
I like that.
I think it's a good point. So maybe it goes, maybe it's E? Maybe it comes a new E? Because then where, what, the E?
It's the conduct of the hearing.
Okay. Now, so what we have is then, item D, standalone, Joel Hall memorial statement.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. It's a good one.
We'll see what they have to say about that.
It's pretty daunting when they say no. You're like, oh my God. There's going to be so many people there.
Because they did ask for a sign-in sheet, and they were told no.
Wow.
For the labor...
Can we demonstrate? No.
Yes, Andy.
I would say the way this is worded seems to mandate that one or the other will happen. And it may be that the Marsa is simply not available.
I'm sorry.
Are we on D still?
He's quite the G. He's dropped, he's dropped.
We're on D.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any suggestions about... Okay, moving on to what is E. Go for it, Andy.
And I have one.
You were on G.
He was talking about G.
Still way down in G.
I'm on the paragraph called E if somebody runs out of time. Anybody want anything to say about that? Cheryl?
I would like to know, can you guys imagine taking these sign-ups electronically? Have you, can you, you know?
We have.
That's going to work?
Nothing currently that would be, we would have to...
Create something from scratch. I'm just, I was just curious. I think it's going to be a hassle, but that's the way we're headed, right? Is it reasonable to ask you to go there?
Yeah, I think it might be a nice place to get to, but thinking about it a little bit more, we're probably going to be, have to be pretty specific about a cut-off time.
Okay.
For electronic sign-up because people would be claiming that they signed up electronically at the moment before the hearing gets closed, and then it gets closed, and then we have a problem.
Well, okay. Well, let's discuss this then. We've got Carolyn and then Bob.
My statement to Tim's is the fact that you can sign up whenever you want. If your little butt is not in that room when that hearing closes, oh, well. Whether you signed up or not.
That's a good point, too. That's already...
But it's going to be in that, isn't it? That goes back to anybody, anybody at all.
I would defer to Amanda before myself.
I think some of this stuff, too, can be considered as recommendations, and then the clerk's office, and when we go out to bid, we can, we can work on the logistics of it and...
Work out the details.
And work out the details. But I mean, I think it can go forward as a suggestion.
Okay, let's...
Jane, and essentially, what I would add is, we're going to put this together. Let's put language in it to say, "Received by the clerk's office," to not just have it out there, to have somebody come in and say, "I signed up on a computer in Willow with Tim," and putting in language to say, "You didn't sign up electronically, but it must be received by the clerk's office." That way, if there's problems with the internet and all the rest of it, we're not embracing that. We're just saying it has to be received by, so that it's worked.
Even if you have the "received by," I mean, you can stick that in there, but the bottom line is going to come down to, when that hearing closes, it doesn't matter what you have to do.
I understand, if I can process it.
Okay.
So, actually, let me, let's just pause for a second. Because we don't have a process for signing up electronically, Because we don't have a process for signing up electronically, do you think we should recommend, the task force recommends that the Clerk's office explore methods for signing up electronically?
That's a lot easier.
I like that.
I do too.
And so Jane, if I might add, so you suggest pulling it out of the individual pieces where it appears kind of disembodied, and have a single point saying, as a tool to encourage public involvement and to facilitate the list process, we highly recommend that the Clerk's office investigate an electronic signup mechanism, and maybe reengage with the public task force?
No!
Oh, no.
Period!
That would be a big problem.
You're a really good writer.
Not if he wasn't.
Take a break, take a break.
The goal of an electronic signup was to give people some idea of when they might speak. And so it's something that happens in the midst of a lot of people speaking. But like you say, at the end, if nobody's in the room, you know, the Chair doesn't have to go down and call that list or anything like that. It's just that if there are 200 people in a room, and 100 signed up three days ago, and other people just showed up or something, and my understanding is, the goal is for those people that signed up well in advance, they kind of get some kind of ballpark idea of when they might talk. It helps them schedule on these. And yeah, I prefer we leave it fuzzy, but that's the only real benefit to signing up online.
Well, you have an anticipation of how long the hearing will be continuing.
Yeah.
How many hours.
And there's no way to know that, except that if you signed up, you're number two on the list, you signed up days before the first one.
You should have shot. You need to be.
You're probably going to be called during the first public hearing, or the first full afternoon of public hearings. But at some point, when you're approaching the end and there's no one left to speak, the list doesn't matter anymore. But it must matter sometime.
All right, so what if we say, the signup sheet has been instituted and continues to be available to anyone who seeks to testify as long as the hearing continues. Delete the people may sign up electronically. Add a sentence that says, the task force suggests the Assembly explore a process for signing up electronically.
Can I throw out something mildly here, Rick?
Yes.
What about if you exceeded the time for testimony on the first night, you've instituted a signup sheet, then it becomes an electronic signup sheet ahead of, then after that, it becomes electronic signup ability? Or not?
Oh, it may, it might be that, in their exploration, that's what they figure out.
Okay.
But I don't know that we know that now.
Right, okay.
I want to ask a question about the first sentence, where it says, if somebody runs out of time, all who come to testify, the Assembly must continue the public hearing. The most important must in the sentence, it's not continue the public hearing because they do that, it's, they have to set a date and a time, so people have some particularity. So, so what I'm suggesting is that the Assembly will continue the public hearing, instead of must.
Okay.
And put the must, they must identify when it's going to happen, because people leave the Assembly and they don't know when it's going to happen. They just know that they said, we're going to continue, but they don't know when. So, what I suggest is that we delete the must, the Assembly must continue, and just say the Assembly will continue. And then the must, which is a much stronger word, goes with the, find the date.
Do you want a time or just the date?
Oh, no, not time.
This is just good manners.
Again, may we ask Amanda how often they do not set a date? I have the impression that sometimes it's just very difficult for them to figure out a date that particular night. But I don't know, I don't have the track record.
I don't have the track record. I cannot think of a specific example off the top of my head where they did not.
Okay.
Set a future date.
A specific date that something would be.
Yeah, with AO 37, we came in the first night of public hearing, then we knew right away we were going to have, I think it was like a Tuesday, Wednesday, or a Wednesday, Thursday, they announced it that night, that we would continue the public hearing Wednesday, potentially Thursday.
They just didn't, I think that they always say when the next one, but they just don't say how many, which is maybe where some of the confusion came in with AO 37. They always said, it's going to be continued to this next night, but not this next night, this next night, and this next night. So you could plan for the next time, but not all the times. Yeah.
And that's where something like a signup sheet facilitates the notion that you would need more than one date.
Okay, but I don't think we can ask them to know all of that.
Oh, no, I totally agree with you that it's hard, because the building is used for other things.
Okay, so now reads, if the Assembly runs out of time to hear all who come to testify, the Assembly will continue the public hearing, and must identify the date of the continued hearing at a date as expeditiously as possible. The signup sheet is instituted, hearing goes on as long as the hearing.
You don't need the date twice. Must identify the continued hearing at a date, a future date.
What?
You've got date twice, screen on, you did, I'll let you worry about that later.
All right.
Must identify, do. Okay. And then we're going to delete, people may sign up electronically, replace it with, explore that, and then the hearings may be set for Saturdays, is Carolyn's idea, where she wanted mandated, they have a new Saturday, and.
Eight hour day.
Slowly behold, Saturdays are possibilities. Okay?
And could I clarify, go backwards please, up into C? We cut off a sentence, if a person is not available when called, they do not forfeit their chance to be heard.
Period.
Period. I'm thinking of adding the phrase, as long as the hearing continues.
Oh. Yeah.
I'll let you think about that.
No, it's true. If they're out there, the hearing gets closed, yeah.
It's true. Can you say that again?
To add the phrase to the end of that sentence, as long as the hearing continues.
That's logical.
It's just making it clearer.
Okay. Moving along, we are now on.
F.
F. Possible, if possible, the title of the ordinances, I don't know how they, wait a minute. If possible, they should run it on the bottom of the TV screen. Item G, if the Assembly anticipates public hearing, they can try and find another place. Even though I know in ordinance it says they shall meet in the Assembly Hall, they have the authority to move it to someplace else.
If it's possible, do we want to say it's possible, it will? Because if it's not possible, that gives them an escape. I mean, why would we have two qualifiers in there? If possible allows them, if it's not possible, they don't have to do it. If it is possible, they should be mandated to do it, is what I would encourage us to say.
I think there's a lot of logistics that go on with moving the meeting, and it's not just so widely noticed, there's, you know, the stuff we use to record it, the all that, the system we use to run the meetings, I think it, we should have it as a suggestion, but I think it works well as a suggestion, because it is a logistical nightmare.
Okay, so it's an issue of practicality more than possibility.
Yeah, and I understand the reason for doing it, to allow as many people to attend, but there is a lot that goes on to having an assembly meeting.
No problem. So we've done with that.
Okay. Moving on to item four, substitute version of ordinances. Yeah.
I was going to say, to me, the way G reads, it says that if they think that it's going to draw more than the assembly chambers can accommodate, they either have to rent the Marston or move to a larger space. And I don't know that we really want to see that. I mean, those are off, they should consider.
Sure.
Renting the Marston or moving to a larger public space.
I even can.
But if they think that it's going to be larger than the assembly chambers, I don't think we should say they have to.
Right.
Should consider, yeah.
Okay, so maybe it says, they can, if it's, Assembly anticipates a public hearing, will draw more people than the chambers can accommodate, task force recommends they consider either using the Marston Theater should be set up, or move the meeting. So you just want me to add, we recommend they consider. Okay?
Add what? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
The task force recommends they consider either the use of either the Marston Theater or move the meeting.
That's all.
Okay, item four, substitute versions. Paragraph A.
Thank you.
The lawyer.
Okay, item B. By the way, by the way, I just wanted to add, well, I.
Go ahead.
I did have a conversation with Julia Tucker, who is the Assembly Counsel, and she said, if the purpose of a public hearing process is to inform the thinking of the Assembly, it is logical to assume that the ordinance before them will morph in relation to the comments that they hear, that it will change and be enhanced and be improved. And so, in her mind, S versions are cleaner than handwritten amendments on the floor. And that people go, oh, okay, now I see what it's morphed into. And I'm just saying that it was a point of view that I hadn't considered before. So that S's are not necessarily.
Always evil.
Negative, they are the process of the evolution of the development of law. At what point does it become some, and she said, when it becomes the opposite of what it was intended to become, then you've got a challenge. But who's to judge that, of course? But it was just an interesting point of view.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, Amanda?
I, having been the minutes clerk for the Assembly, recognize how the S version can be cleaner than on the floor amendments. I think one conversation that this group has had is, just how is the public part of the conversation when these new S versions keep coming out? And so, and making sure that there's sufficient notice and opportunity for the public to address changes might be things that we could consider discussing.
So, let me ask, following my, an S version is introduced, is the S version in the back of the room?
Not always. Changes at the Clerk's office through these conversations is working on, but sometimes it's hard because it doesn't always.
So maybe what we should do is.
Lay it on the table.
The task force recommends that any S version being presented to the body be available to the public. I mean, something as simple as that.
I like that, Lindsay.
It's real important.
That's so straightforward, that's great.
It will also reduce the number of S versions, I would think, because sometimes it feels like there are three or four, and they're just dancing around.
Okay, then.
Not in cooperation.
Available for the public in the back of the house, or.
With other agenda documents.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If I remember right, on the S versions, you know, in the Alaska Legislature, when you're amending a document, it's very clear what's been taken in, what's been added and what's been deleted, through a use of brackets and font changes. Is there, can we recommend something like that with these S versions? Because how, they come out whole, and you don't know really what's been taken out.
Which is why, by the way, you've got both versions.
Right, so I think that's what we're trying to say in A, right? It's kind of like trying to change.
If I can jump in, that Trainee, it sounded like considers himself the master of S versions, and he considers it a cleaning up process. You know, he'll improve on the original language.
Right.
So I can imagine him doing an S version with some explanation, I cleaned it up and it's a lot better, but I can't imagine doing the brackets.
So I see Joel's point of, this was the original document introduced, this is AO 2013-100, and then we've gone 100 S, 100 S1, 100 S2. You should be able to see on 100 S2 what the original 100 looked like. Even though I work for the Assembly, I can't think now if they track it throughout the changes. And I don't know if you're familiarity with the changes that happened with the 37, if they did, but that, I can see how that would be valuable information, to have the document have all the changes as it's going for it. I just, I don't know why I can't think if it already does that or not.
I don't think that it does, because I remember in the S1 or the S2 version, you know, there was deletion of police and fire from the managed competition requirement. I mean, so you have huge sections of the people who work for the municipality now no longer subject to this, that it came in as a result of public testimony, it was on the S1 or the S2 version, but you know, we're poring through this bit by bit, because you can't really tell what's in, what's out, and what they changed. And so just, it's relatively easy to do, they do it in Juno all the time, it's a simple, separate bracketing the things that are gone, and bolding the things that are added, and you just have a living document that has, even though it looks the, you know, it also helps for people to understand when things have been substantially changed, and when a new, when more testimony is in order. Because I think that's the other thing, is if you have an S2 that is totally separate, and not even on the same table from the S version, if you're in the public, you can't say, well, wait a minute, they just changed all of this stuff, and they're not going to let me talk again? You have to have all three versions, do your shuffling in the, in the audience. So I just, I think that if that's what I, when I read S, that's what I think, that's what I would like to see, is a singular, that the documents are not new with no reference to what it used to be.
Okay. And I, I just, I'm just going to comment that, yes, Cheryl, I heard Cheryl say, sometimes the S version is in moderation of a lot of stuff that is not, it's like, whole new paragraphs are added, and I'm just saying, logistically, you've got a challenge there.
Logistics is, I agree with her, of course.
And so, Cheryl, hang.
I'm done. Logistics.
Just a comment, is federal regulations do that all the time. You know, regulations, and every time you see a federal regulation, and they have a hearing, they go through regulations, and they show you what they were going to do, and they show you what the changes are, and it's really simple. I mean, I don't see why, it shouldn't be that difficult, they should know what their changes are, so.
Okay.
I think it's important, I think it's really important.
Sure. There are differences between, I never read O 37, I'll be frank, and I can understand why you would argue for that, and I think it's legitimate. Those, that needs to be bracketed, but the stuff that I've been working on most recently, was it 63? I forget these numbers, on the public hearing process, it was just a smush, and it was bad enough trying to read it without brackets, and to add brackets to it would have just made it worse. It was such a mess.
I guess what I'm arguing is, difficulty aside, a complete representation of the morphing of a document from A to B to C is the least the public deserves. We can find a way to articulate it in a way that is, it is difficult, but if you've read legislature coming out of Juno.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I agree.
Yeah.
Especially in something as technical, as technical as 37. I've been saying with some other issues. And also, the way we handled it that night, and it took hours, was to have it side by side, there were three S's, and we just sat there, and then marked it, and then.
They have to move, you don't have all three S's in one paper. You have one to two, two to three. Because, well, they have to be adopted, you can't have three S's on the table, that's not, that should be, one of the points here, you shouldn't get to have three S's in one night. You should have one S that is either voted up or down, moving to the second S, which you know.
My second point, I guess I should make, I think we probably discussed this with some sympathetic Assembly members, before we get too far down this track.
Okay, let's, let's just say, for purposes of getting through, let's just say, S versions have to be available, in paragraph A, we say it has to show what has been changed from the original version. B, they have to be available, and then finally, if the changes are so substantial that there's a new public hearing, we do not even report to describe how anybody would figure that out.
I had one question about this, and I just ask the opinion of the group here on C. If the changes are so substantial, that is significantly changed the original proposal through S versions or amendments, that's what I propose we add, the new version should be considered a new document. Because this is the hole that they can climb through, right? You, oh, well, we did an S version, we didn't change it through S versions, we changed it through amendments, and all we're doing is we're suggesting that if you change it substantially, you might want to think about letting the public comment on it. We're not saying you have to, we're just saying that thought should cross your mind, that we should get to comment together.
As long as it's not mandatory, we're not.
We're just saying, the new version.
Because, I mean, you know, we just amended it with my little piece of paper.
Should be considered.
I mean, there's some amendments that just happened, that, you know, you're not going to have a chance to start over.
Absolutely, I just don't want to cut off one thing, and then they come pouring through the other side. My issue is, if you can change something substantially, the way they treat you right now is if you have ever testified on any S version, they don't want to ever hear from you again, no matter how difficult a change it is.
Any other proposals on.
Well, no, I'm just trying to clarify, Joel, so on under C, your suggestion would be put, if the changes through S versions or amendments are so substantial.
Right.
And the language is saying.
That they significantly change.
I would support that.
In other words, you can't take a bicycle bill and put, or, you know.
I get the concept.
Pro-choice.
The language is acceptable to me, I like it.
I just want to mention that they are governed by the title, one title, they can't, they can't go from bicycles to, for example, insane.
I just want to make sure everybody around this table recognizes that if the S language stuff is so difficult for them, they will regress back to doing it the old fashioned sausage making way, and that's not prudent. And also, you often don't get a chance to even comment on those amendments, because it's after they've closed public hearing in their amending way. So, I agree with Joel, that it's, it's either, it's, most of the Assembly people aren't writing their own S versions.
Oh, they're not?
They may come up with the language, but they give it to either the Clerk's office or the municipal Clerk's office, and it gets cranked out. So, you know, whether Trainee knows how to use Tracker or not, somebody's going to.
Good.
And it does make it much easier to see, oh, well, I'm not upset about this now, I understand what it is.
Thank you.
But if we make it too hard, the way around it is to just go back and do it the old fashioned way.
I do have the notion that, I don't have, I don't know what actually got adopted in Title 21, and I tried to find out. So I'm just saying that as a pedestrian in that process, I'm not even sure. They knew.
It's okay, I don't know. I think half of the commission members, or more than half, don't really know either.
Yeah. Okay, Jane?
Yes, ma'am.
If you accommodate, Joel's concern about that change.
If you accommodate Joel's concern about fact changes, are these desirable perhaps? Have some other modifiers, like really complicated, really heavy stuff, it'd be really great to have fact changes, at least mention it.
Okay.
But I agree that if we mandate fact changes, we maybe have the correct level of power.
Okay, I'll, I'll put it in as, it's.
Does that, does that suit you guys?
I, I think it's, I think it's fine, I, you know, I don't have a problem either way, either that it be looked at and evaluated if it's taken issue, but I think they could do it now, and it's not a big deal.
Okay, moving along to page four, paragraph five, continuation of public hearing. Any comments about A, any comments about B?
Do, now that we've moved electronically off to like a side note, do we want to make reference to, make comment in writing, and, oh, no, never mind, different kind of electronic setting.
Yeah, you can submit your comments.
Yeah, I got it now.
I think that's good.
Okay.
There is something written somewhere, because I read it, I don't remember where.
That's a broad scope.
I know, it's really broad. Saying that public records will be kept for five years.
Oh, Amanda?
And.
Is that true?
Then, my question is, with today's technology, there's, do we really have to have a time limit on it?
There's a retention schedule, and I am not sure if this is, I mean.
That's not charter.
It's not charter, and I think that the conversation about technology is separate from the conversation about documents, because.
They scan it, and they scan it before they show it to the public.
So, so.
I think it's the IRS.
But permanent files are not electronic. If you're looking at permanent files, if you're having a conversation about permit files, you're talking about this, electronic stuff, you always need another source to access it, so if, and that is a whole huge conversation now.
Wow, I didn't know that.
So, are you saying that you want them to keep all these little papers? No. I just think that it is a whole huge conversation kind of outside of this task force.
Right, no, my thought was that they could be kept as a little megabyte, kilobyte, something, somewhere that you could access electronically.
We're not going to go there tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
It is way more complicated.
The public, the intention of the, of the public record proposal is that everyone gets to see all of the stuff that has come into the clerk's office, that's distributed to the Assembly, and that the public gets to see it as well. That's what the purpose of this paragraph is.
Yeah, I think that is good.
Times just darn swell.
And I, and I changed it so that all the emails received and distributed to the Assembly members, as opposed to all the personal emails that the Assembly gets, because of this conversation. So, if, if the clerk gets it as a public comment, then it's available on the website as part of the public record.
Are we on six now? Have you moved to six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any conversation about six A?
Yes.
Cheryl?
I, I would urge us to consider dropping the word "considered" in the last sentence of six A, so no anonymous.
The submitter must be identified by the name of the submitter, no anonymous submittals will be considered or posted.
Will be posted.
What?
No anonymous submittals will be posted.
Why, why drop the?
It's just extraneous, it's just unneeded.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
You can't control what people consider and they don't.
On the first line, where it says, "Resolution should include an audio," could we, in between there, comma, "at a minimum," comma, and audio?
Oh, yeah, good point, because it's visual right now, visual and audio.
There's video, and there may be pieces of things in here that we haven't included.
And I sort of already think that we do this.
You think what?
We already have.
Audio only?
Agenda that is, has the documents attached to it.
Yeah.
That has, I mean, that is all available on the website.
It's just to make sure somebody in the future doesn't progress.
Oh, no, 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 actually, I, I'm, I'm hearing you, but I, I thought that one thing we did add is if you get emails or other documents, go to Assembly members, that the public gets to see them also, which doesn't happen today.
My only proposal then would be to split it into two separate things, and maybe clarify that we like this, and that we should keep doing this, and that the second part is, and you should also do this.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so maybe do we not, what, the notion was that there is a public record, and I know you're saying, yes, there already is a public record, we don't need to say anything about that. Maybe what we say, in addition to the public record that already exists, we recommend if materials are distributed by the clerk to Assembly members, that that is also available to the public.
I absolutely like everything you said.
I like it.
So do I.
All right, then. I could probably, Amanda and I can work on what is already given under law and just add the thing that says, the stuff that the clerk passes out to the Assembly members is also available to the public.
And I think that's good.
Paragraph B.
I think that's a mess.
We talked, we talked about it in another place.
Yeah.
So, should we delete it from here?
Well, this part says something different, it's talking about how they can access the public record.
So it's not bad, too.
Right.
Okay.
Weird. Our brilliant stance.
Yeah.
Paragraph seven. Meeting room of the Assembly, A, reader board.
I do have a, a question on one, two, three, four, fifth line down. Any issues that have been postponed, all items that had been adopted, and I was thinking that might want to read "acted upon," because some of them may have been rejected, rather than adopted.
I want mine.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Paragraph B. Is it spelled efficacy, right?
What is wrong with the acoustics? What can they do?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I have no idea, but I think they should look at it.
Yeah, quite often, in that room, everything's set up for the Assembly, so I guess it's not so bad, but there are times where, especially if there's new people that are going there, you can't tell because of the way the audio, the acoustics play in there.
Who's talking?
When you're there, you can't tell who's talking. You know, I have an advantage in knowing everybody's voice, so I know who's speaking, but every, all, you'll see all the time, over here, I'm asking, and then the Assembly person will kind of raise their hand, and the person doesn't know who they're supposed to be addressing or nothing, so there's no light cue that when an Assembly person speaks that says they're the one that's speaking. And that round room really does play havoc with the quality of sound, so when you're, when you're sitting in the audience, you can't always necessarily hear.
I usually sit down front, and I haven't had it.
Something up front, sometimes someone way in the back can hear, and, you know, this is something that is being looked at, it's a big, money, shut.
It really is a problem. If you want to hear good, go stand up against the back wall, they need to hear everything.
Wow.
Back to the wall.
Even the whispers of the Assembly.
I'm sure.
Sometimes that's a good position.
Paragraph, paragraph number eight. Any changes to community council collaboration cheerfully executed for good cause?
Darn swell, it's my, no, I really like it.
Paragraph nine, Assembly presence at public hearings. Paragraph A, yes?
I'm thinking that, and Amanda, you can clarify if I'm right or wrong, or, that before the meeting starts on line two, should be worded more like, when the public hearing section of the meeting begins, starts. Because it's.
You're in paragraph A.
Started, yes, because the meeting started, nine A, the meeting started at three or four AM, didn't, uh, PM, didn't it? It started earlier in the afternoon.
I don't know the answer yet. I, I know that they typically try and do a dinner break after the consent agenda and before public hearings start, so that they don't interrupt anyone in the middle of public hearing. It's typically the way that they do it.
What, what, what time generally, the Assembly seems to start to me generally at five or 5:30?
Five.
Yeah, and, and I guess, the thing here to me is, I like to say, think about having a late lunch or an early dinner. I mean, seriously, we're talking two days a month, I haven't seen anybody emaciated on the Assembly floor in my, and, and the fact that, that they could, they could take a late lunch or an early dinner, and then the flow of business to go forward, if they need to help them wear their break, great, but it just, to me, sends a lot of anxiety.
And, and right now, Amanda?
I'm just going to make a comment. Things to consider, the Assembly members, yes, there's also all the staff that is at the meeting. When I go to meetings, I get to work eight o'clock, 7:30 in the morning, I work a full day, I don't always take a lunch, and, and, yes, it is, we go eat dinner, and it's nice, because sometimes I'm there till 11:00 or midnight, and so that is.
Where do you go?
We just eat it in the back during dinner break. So, I understand the public's frustration with this, I don't always think it's exclusively about the members, it is also about all the staff that's required to attend the meeting from all the departments.
And, and right now, the public hearings are supposed to start at six?
Yeah.
Well, they can't, they can't start any earlier than six.
That's set in the code that they start at six.
They have to start at six.
Okay, so.
And that's the deal, basically.
In, in practice, what happens is, they break at usually 10 to six, or something like that, six, go after the consent agenda. They start at five.
It doesn't function the same way at every single meeting. Sometimes it is a really quick consent agenda, and they are able to break at, you know, 5:15, 5:30. Sometimes it is a consent agenda with hotly contested items that they spend a lot of time discussing, and they don't break until maybe 7, 7:30. I think something to consider is maybe suggesting a time limitation to encourage the members to take no more than a 15 or 20-minute break. I'm, I'm just, it's a.
Because that feels good.
I think that it is not only about the members, and I think that, but I'm just, things to consider, maybe you didn't think about.
Okay, so, all I'm trying to do is figure out, what's, what is, we want to say, is, is, because what I heard was people thought it was rude that they came for a public hearing, and then everybody got up and left for a half hour.
Yeah.
So, is that what happens?
Well, on the agenda, it's, it's kind of in fine print, that the public hearings will not start any sooner than 6:00, right? So that lets everybody know supposedly that they don't have to rush there to get there by 5:50, you know, they don't, public hearings will not start until after 6:00.
Yes.
But also, we are told by the clerk's office, you should be there at 6:00.
And, and, finish.
And you should, but I think a lot of people, you know, so all of a sudden, the consent agenda runs past 6:00. The public has this image that it says on the agenda that they're supposed to start at 6:00, it actually says they won't start before 6:00. So I think there's a lack of understanding that, you know, I got there at 6:00, then they take their damn dinner time, they say they're going to be back in 15 minutes, they take a half an hour, you know, they're, you know, they're killing me. And that's where the problem is. I think that if everybody knew that the public hearings started at a certain time, and it's when the consent agenda is done, and it may not be 6:00, but you don't have to be there until 6:00, if you're going to testify in a public hearing. And then if the Assembly would, instead of saying, "We're going to take a 10 or 15-minute dinner break and take a half an hour," if they say 10 or 15 minutes, then they ought to do it in 10 or 15 minutes. The expectation is set up, and when they don't meet the expectation that they stated, it's a problem.
Okay, Cheryl, it's Cheryl.
Is there any reason that they can, that a dinner break cannot be scheduled from 5:40 to 6:00, whether the consent agenda is done or not, or anything else, stop, you eat, you go back to work? I mean, is that an option, or am I crazy?
They could establish an absolute time, just like for appearance requests, that they start at 6:00.
What, if they are in the middle of a heated debate over something on the consent agenda, are they just going to stop that? And I, I think that the reason that the agenda is so loose, because every meeting functions differently, sometimes there's things to discuss, sometimes there're not, and that's why they're given the, you know, it will not start before 6:00 for the public hearing, so that people know they have to be there by 6:00, but if the consent agenda runs long, if there's a lot of recognition resolutions, whatever, there's that window. So, I, I think that we don't want to make it, we don't want to box everything in.
Okay, Cheryl?
I would agree, I'd say send a clear message to the public.
I think that, my, my suggestion's off the table now, because it's inappropriate, but I'm thinking if we have the reader board, so that when you're watching the Assembly on television, and you're waiting to come in for the public hearing, you'll know where they are, and you can anticipate that they're going to be still working on this agenda for another half an hour, you can anticipate. And then secondly, I really, I've always hoped that we would encourage them to set a time limit on their supper. It is very frustrating, you'll be, you get 15 in a break, and then you don't see them.
Okay, I'm going to suggest that you say the task force recommends you set, now, pick a number, 15 or 20 minutes.
20 seems fair.
I think, I think 20 for food is.
20 minutes limit for the dinner break.
We don't want them to have gas plan testimony.
And I think we can even, you know, move forward with this, we can work on, maybe we can have it set up on this television, that the dinner break is 20 minutes, it started at this time, so if people were watching at home, they would know. I mean, I think that we can work on public.
How many people, what's going on?
With that, and, I don't know.
Okay, I'll figure out some way to write that. Danny, paragraph B.
I just request that I be shown as recused on that one.
Okay, we are recu, Amanda voted no on that. Just recuse.
Hell, now, half of this is in the tent of Amanda's head.
The phrase "hell no" was you, no, right?
Recuse, yes, recuse.
I didn't have an opinion on it.
General boss is to be straightened out. Right, right.
I wonder if it's worse to make a notice of this rather than just say.
Okay, item C, actually, I, I did calm it down, I was, this is more gentle than the previous version.
Yeah. I think this last one, I like it, my only thought is, I don't think that it actually addresses Assembly presence at public hearing.
Yeah, okay, in the wrong place.
But I think that it is a, a good idea.
So maybe, we're surprised we, we have a whole section on.
On this, maybe in the notice section.
Well, here, it's in 7A, actually, the identification of any issues that have been postponed, all items that have been acted upon, as well as any change that has been made regarding the order. So it's already covered, you can drop it, right?
All right, drop.
Yeah, drop.
Any other recommendations for any other changes in the statute?
I know, it's part of the work. Only 25 minutes late, that's a big deal.
Mr. Heiberg, do you want to add any comments?
Uh, my Congress, good to you. Uh, we are in participation or what?
Yes.
We are in.
Yes, sir.
I have a question to something you said earlier about, on, you mentioned, member yesterday's meeting, invite by the Assembly attorney, can you act, can you tell me who, who was in that meeting, besides yourself and the, and the Assembly attorney?
Just Julia Tucker and I.
I said, that's all that you were, okay.
No, wait a minute.
I had a meeting with Julia Tucker after we talked to, I asked her.
After the task force. It wasn't a.
Julia put an invite at the, at the, at that meeting, put it.
No, three weeks ago, I had sent a note to Julia Tucker saying, "I'd love to talk to you about this," she was gone for two weeks, she showed up yesterday and said, "I'm available," so I wouldn't have a meeting with Julia Tucker.
It wasn't a meeting with all the task force, it was just a meeting with Jane.
Because what she, Julie had said was, "You're invited to meet with me."
She's. She's, I had written her a note, she had written me a note. She said, I'm here, you can come, talk to me after your meeting.
From what she was saying, it looked like the invite to the hotel.
No, I went and had a meeting with Julia Tucker.
Okay, that's the only thing.
I was not invited.
None of these people, I had a private, secret, quiet meeting behind closed doors. All right.
Lay it down.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, what happens from here, henceforth?
Okay, what, what happens now is Amanda and I clean up this document. This document becomes the draft. All of your names are attached to it, and this draft is set for public hearing for October 1st.
I will attach the document to the website.